Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, I'm Dan Ghorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission. I am the Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of November 7th, 2022. We are joined today by Vice Chairman Ken Knuckles, Commissioner Bozorg Osorio, Cerulo, Crowell, Dweck, Gold, Kermani, Marine, and Rampershead. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here. The city planning team today is going to take us through several projects that will become certified into ULP today. Brief us on a few others that will have a public hearing on Wednesday and will consider a city council scope modification, a modification from the city council for the purposes of determining scope. First up, for certification is the proposed expansion of an existing Borough Park supermarket called Paperific and the creation of a new office space which they need to operate and grow the supermarket while expanding the grocery business, which took off during the pandemic. Named for an old paper company that once existed at the Borough Park site and near Greenwood Cemetery and the Church Avenue F and G train, this project would create enough room for Paperific to double their supermarket and build new office space, generating up to 400 jobs for the development in total. Next for certification is a proposed housing development in the Rockaways, which if approved would bring 40 new and resilient homes, 10 of which would be permanently income restricted in Far Rockaway, across the street from a charter school, near the 40-acre Bayswater Park, a high school, and of course, the already in the works revitalization of downtown Far Rockaway that is already underway and will itself create about 1,000 permanently income restricted homes. The third is also a land use change request. This one by Tire Heaven, an auto repair shop in Rosedale, Queens, to legalize that longstanding business that has otherwise been operating safely. So from Paperific to Tire Heaven, we've got it all today. And after that, the staff will brief the commission on several projects where we're going to have a public hearing this Wednesday, including a new headquarters for the New York City Administration for Children's Services at 110 Williams Street, just blocks from where we are sitting today, and a proposal for a new six-story building at 446 to 448 Park Avenue in Bed-Stuy. So that is to set the table. Now let's get right into it. And Ryan, why don't you tell us what's happening first? Although I think I can predict your answer. Let's go for it.
Sure. So just for the record, this is the New York City Planning Commission Review Session, and the time is 1:04 PM. And a quorum is present in the hearing room at 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment and a special permit in Brooklyn Community District 12, and our presenter is Josh Vogel.
Thank you, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application for zoning map amendment from M12, M21, and R6 to C44A and R6B, a zoning text amendment to Appendix F, and a zoning special permit to facilitate the development of a new commercial building that includes the expansion of an existing supermarket and new office space. The application would support the growth of a local business while bringing new jobs to the area. The project is located at 1459 38th Street in Borough Park, Community District 12. Here we're looking north at the project area, which is bounded by 38th Street to the south, 15th Ave. to the east, 37th Street to the north, and 14th Avenue to the west. Greenwood Cemetery, which we can see in the top left, is four blocks to the northwest. The elevated subway runs along McDonald Avenue with F and G subway service at Church Ave., just east of the project area. Zooming in a little bit more, both 37th and 38th Streets are 60 feet wide. 15th Avenue is 80 feet wide. Directly north of the project area, on the corner of 37th and 14th Ave., is Brooklyn Square, a six-story, 440,000-square-foot office complex spanning most of the block. Mid-block on 38th Street is a development site, Paperific, a kosher supermarket that operates two locations in the area. The surrounding area is predominantly mixed-use, with residential uses consisting mostly of lower-scale, single- or two-family homes. There are also some medium-density apartment buildings, mostly along the avenues. Non-conforming row homes are found immediately west of and in the project area. The most retail corridors within the surrounding area are located along 14th and 13th Avenues to the west of the project area, with uses including supermarkets, clothing stores, pharmacies, and bakeries. There are also several industrial and commercial uses along 38th and 37th Streets, including warehouses, a gas station, a bakery, a printing supplies manufacturer, and a building material supplier. The surrounding area also contains several community facility uses, most of which are synagogues and yeshivas that serve the area's large Orthodox Jewish population. Project area is located in R6, M12, and M21 zoning districts. An R6 district is mapped to the east, south, and west of the project area. R6 districts are medium-density residential districts that have a maximum FAR of 3 or 4.8 for community facility and a maximum street wall height of 6 stories or 60 feet. M12 and M21 districts are mapped over portions of the project area, as well as to the immediate north and south. These districts permit light industrial uses as well as office and retail uses at a maximum FAR of 2. M12 districts permit community facility uses with an FAR of 4.8. Supermarkets are limited to a maximum of 10,000 square feet in M1 and M2 districts. The area is well-served by public transit. The F subway at Dittmas Avenue is two blocks southeast from the development site, and the F and G Church Avenue is located three blocks northeast. The B16 and B35 buses run along 14th Avenue, stopping a block west of the development site. The B16 provides service between Bay Ridge and Lefferts Gardens, and the B35 provides service between Brownsville and Sunset Park. Dome Playground, operated by the Parks Department, is one block east of the project area along 38th and Dayhill and features ball courts, fields, fitness equipment, and a playground. Here's a view of the project area looking west down 38th Street with the development site mid-block in yellow. And here's a better view of the development site, Paperific. The supermarket has been located here since 1946 and is in need of more space to expand its offerings. The white-blue building on the left is used as office space for the supermarket, and both sites are applicant-owned. Now looking north from 38th Street, just west of the development site, these are two-story, one- and two-family row homes that were constructed in 1901 and are legally non-conforming. Here we're looking northwest from the corner of 15th and 38th. The building on the corner is a synagogue. Now moving north along 15th Avenue, we're looking southwest from the corner of 37th Street. The 15th Ave. frontage seen in this view includes vacant lots and a warehouse for building supplies. Now looking west down 37th Street, we can see the project area on the left and Brooklyn Square on the right. Looking south from 37th Street, we see lots 15 and 17 of the development site, currently used as parking for the supermarket. And here's another view of the parking on 37th Street. Both lots 15 and 17 are applicant-owned. These 50-foot-deep lots make up along 37th Street, make up the former railroad right-of-way, which I'll detail later. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a new 104,000-square-foot, 4-FAR commercial building. The ground floor would be used for a new Paperific supermarket. The supermarket has not been renovated since 1946. In addition to much-needed aesthetic upgrades, both interior and exterior, the expansion will accommodate wider aisles and new amenities like a bakery, takeout counter, and coffee stand. The second floor would be used as office space for the supermarket, primarily to accommodate its growing online ordering. Floors 3 through 5 would contain office space with open floor plans, designed to contain a combination of co-working spaces as well as individual offices for workers looking to locate centrally in the community. Paperific anticipates they will double their workforce with the expanded space. The building will rise to 63 feet and sit back on the third and fourth floors, and open terraces would be provided for each office floor. The supermarket entrance, along with the office lobby, would be located on 38th Street. Two curb cuts would be located on the more industrial 37th Street side of the building, with one providing access to cellar-level parking for supermarket customers and office tenants, while the other would access a covered loading berth for supermarket deliveries. Due to the previous freight railroad that ran at grade along 37th Street, 37th Street does not have a sidewalk. As part of the builder's pavement plan, the applicant will install new sidewalks, replace adjacent roadway lanes, repair catch basins, and plant street trees. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from R6, M12, and M21 to C44A and R6B. The C44A district would better reflect the mixed-use character of the surrounding area while providing opportunities for increased density to facilitate development of the new supermarket and office space. And the R6B district would bring the adjacent row homes into conformance and compliance while reflecting the existing scale and use. C44A districts are commercial districts with an R7A residential equivalent. They permit medium-density contextual buildings with residential, commercial, and community facility uses. Residential uses are permitted up to 4.6 FAR with MIH and up to 4 FAR for commercial and community facility uses. MIH buildings may rise to nine stories or 95 feet, and commercial buildings may rise to eight stories or 85 feet. The massing scene here highlighted in yellow represents the commercial envelope, while the rest of the envelopes here show residential equivalent. No residential is being required in this application, and no parking is required for commercial uses in the C44A district. R6B districts are typical rowhouse contextual districts where quality housing regulations are required. They permit a maximum FAR of 2.2 with MIH at a maximum height of 55 feet. Parking is required for 50% of units and is waived for income-restricted units within a transit zone. A zoning text amendment to Appendix F is being requested to designate the proposed project area as an MIH area, which requires permanently income-restricted housing be provided within new residential developments. The applicants are proposing to map MIH options 1 and 2 coterminous with the project area. Option 1 requires that 25% of residential floor area must be income-restricted for residents with incomes averaging 60% of the AMI. Option 2 requires that 30% of the floor area be reserved for income-restricted residents with incomes averaging 80% of AMI. While the proposed development does not include any residential component, if new residential floor area is developed in the project area, permanently income-restricted housing would be required. And lastly, the applicant is seeking a special permit to permit development over the right-of-way where railroad or transit use has been permanently discontinued. This special permit is required because lots 15 and 17, which front 37th Street, are along the former railroad right-of-way of the Culver Elevated Shuttle, an elevated subway line that ran from 1954 to 1975, running directly along 37th Street from Fort Hamilton Parkway to McDonald Avenue. The elevated structure was demolished in 1985. Beneath the shuttle, the South Brooklyn Railroad's freight operation ran at ground level, and it was discontinued in the early 1980s and later paved over. This former transit right-of-way has been the subject of several special permits along the corridor over the past 30 years and has been almost entirely developed. Due to adjacent development along this right-of-way, future transit uses along the corridor are not possible. Additionally, including the underutilized lots in the proposed development allows for a superior site plan and improvements to 37th Street frontage. The proposed through-block development also shifts parking and loading away from the primarily residential 38th Street to the more industrial 37th Street. Pursuant to Local Law 78, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity because it would increase the permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. As of 2020, the population of Brooklyn Community District 12 is predominantly white, 65%, with 17% of the residents in the area identified as Asian, 11% as Hispanic, and 2% as Black. The applicant states the proposed project would help promote equitable access to opportunity by creating more than 80,000 square feet of office space in an area with proportionally low percentage of labor force participation in the office sector, along with additional supermarket and construction jobs. The report calculates the proposed development will create over 400 permanent jobs and 170 temporary construction jobs. In conclusion, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from M12, M21, and R6 to C44A and R6B, a zoning text amendment to map MIH, coterminous with the project area, and a special permit to develop over a former railroad right-of-way. The proposed actions would facilitate 104,000-square-foot commercial development at 1459 38th Street in Borough Park, Brooklyn, Community District 12. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I see questions, and I'm going to go first to the Vice Chairman. Before I do, one question from me. The as-of-right scenario for this particular project, they see they're in M12, M21, and are seeking to expand. What is their opportunity to expand, if any, under the current zoning framework?
Sure, so the current supermarket's already 15,000 square feet, and in M1 and M2 districts, supermarkets and grocery stores are limited to 10,000 square feet, so they would not be able to expand.
And the office?
I actually don't have the office. I can get back to you on that.
Okay. All right. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. Josh, regarding the special permit to permit development over a former railroad right-of-way, since the railroad usage has been discontinued and is not contemplated, so far as I can see here, what is the planning rationale to continue to require a special permit for a use that is no longer extant?
Well, the special permit was originally intended, one, to make sure that there wasn't development over former transit corridors where there could be future transit uses, and also to make sure that bulk on these right-of-ways wasn't stacked up to create developments that were not within context of the area. But with this corridor over the years, most of the, almost all of the lots have been developed, so they're, in this case, it's not really needed. But if you look at all those sites, they all went through the special permit process. Here on the corner, there was a rezoning in 2006 for R6 for a housing development that was never built, but they had to apply for the special permit, so it's for consistency. But I will say that it's been an onerous process for the applicant team, and in some cases, it has, you know, but some applicants have walked away from it due to the special permit.
Again, I understand precedent, but there seems to be, at least to me, no planning rationale for it at this point in time.
I think, Mr. Vice Chairman, you make an excellent point about whether we should explore changes to this particular special permit requirement. Not for this case, because we can't, but for future cases. And one additional point, I think that was part of the planning rationale to establish the special permit in the first instance, was that a lot of these lots are irregularly shaped, and so it allows for better design and configuration of the lots when they do come through for the special permit. That said, in a situation like this, it is, it's more onerous than useful. So I think your point is well taken.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just curious, didn't see it in the package, and maybe it doesn't exist, but did the community board weigh in on this at all?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. So this is just being certified today, so it will just start the public review process, and the first step of that is to go to the community board. So I'll be back before the CPC hearing to present a refresher on it and update the commission on community board and Borough President recommendations.
Commissioner Marine.
I just have a process question, both for you, Josh, and Chairman. So if, knowing that this train, overhead train doesn't exist anymore and there's no plans for it, what would be the process of removing that altogether, that right-of-way, so that we don't have to go through this process or further applicants don't have to be discouraged by going through the process? Is there a mechanism to do that?
It could be downgraded to an authorization or a certification, maybe in some of our citywide text amendments. But again, that's kind of above my pay grade.
No, I guess I'm asking, I understand that we can create some sort of legal instrument to state the fact that this right-of-way is no longer existing or exists, but is not needed. Is there any way of just removing it altogether? Because it seems to be creating, and I also do appreciate the fact that it is for a special permit and it helps to create, facilitate a better design, knowing that the lots are irregular, but most folks would have to come to us anyway. So this layer just adds more economic duress onto the project, higher rents, you know, not by much, but you know, it starts to add up. So is there any way of starting that area and then just removing it altogether? The train doesn't exist, and we're not going to bring it back. So why have a right-of-way that just hangs out there and creates more obstacles for an applicant?
I'll just add that I agree with everything that's been said. We receive a lot of these where there's former railroad right-of-ways. We've had a couple across Brooklyn, and as Josh said, it's pretty onerous, and it does create issues for smaller applicant teams that don't want to go through the process. But because of where it sits in the zoning resolution, it would require a text change to the overall city's zoning resolution. And we've obviously recognized that this is a problematic process that we're taking a look at internally, but it would require changes to the citywide text.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And as it turns out, we are exploring these possibilities of changing the text for economic development opportunities. So I think it's a good time for us to take a look at that. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Josh, for the presentation. I also have a procedural question. I'm wondering to what extent, or when, does Local Law 78 require the use of the latest ACS data? I see that the proposals that we're seeing are using 2015, 2019, and since March, we have 2016, 2020 available. I mean, I understand that that's a big undertaking to update the Explorer, but I'm wondering what the law says in terms of when projects that enter, that are considered for certification and then later enter the planning process need to reuse the latest data?
We can check on if the law says anything. My recollection is it is not that specific, but the point taken that we should update these, I think we were also looking at, there's lots of data in the Explorer, and we were looking at the best timing for data releases so that we're only updating the Explorer, you know, at key points and not sort of constantly, because we do have other data sources. But we can get back to you on that. I'll ask our folks who are in charge of this, our Demographics team.
Thank you, Ryan, I appreciate that. And maybe to further explain why I see the, sort of like, the need to take a closer look. Is that right now, if you look at the median household income, it's considerably higher? I mean, the ACS, we know it's just discussing trends. We know that that's not sort of like, it's a sample, right? But I think that at the very least, we should look at it and compare what the applicant is doing with what at least the latest data is telling us.
Sure, sure. And just so, I believe that we could also, at staff level, pull that data and come back with it. So just for everyone's information, it's...
Yeah, I can share the most updated data at pre-hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the right-of-way is owned by the applicant?
Thank you for the question. Yes, it was disposed of from DCAST to EDC, who then sold the actual lots to the applicant.
So just the removal of the right-of-way allows them to use it, but it was always available to them in their FAR calculations?
Yes, but if it was merged in the zoning lot, they'd still need a special permit even if they weren't developing on that specific lot.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold.
Thank you. And then just one more, on the townhouses or the rowhouses that are there, just speak a little bit about the fact it seems like this would put them into conformance with what's out there, but also give them some optionality so that they could go up if need be? Is that the thinking here on the zoning change?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. This is really intended just as a zoning map cleanup. These homes were built in 1901, and in 1961, they were zoned as, you know, a larger manufacturing area. So this is just to bring them into compliance and conformance. We do not anticipate development on any of the sites.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. This item is certified, and we will look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you for that. Okay, Ryan, let's move on to the next.
Certainly, the second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 14, and our presenter is Kathy Ko.
This is a private application in the Far Rockaway neighborhood of Queens, submitted by applicant Queens Realty Holdings of New York, LTD, in Community District 14 on the property located at 2546 Far Rockaway Boulevard. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from an R41 district to an R6B district to facilitate the development of a new five-story residential building and a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The project area is outlined here in red, and it's located approximately a half-mile west of the downtown Far Rockaway rezoning area, which was approved in 2017. And while not in the transit zone, the project area has good access to public transit with the Beach 25th Street subway station servicing the A-line, located two blocks east, and there's also multiple bus lines that service the area. The project area was mapped with an R32 and R4 district in 1961 and was rezoned to its current R41 district as part of the 2008 Rockaway neighborhood's rezoning, which affected approximately 280 blocks. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential and community facility uses, and the area immediately surrounding the project area in R41 and R4A districts is comprised mostly of one- and two-family detached and semi-detached residential buildings, as well as multifamily buildings that range from three to six stories. Community facility uses, which are shaded on this map in blue, include the Challenge Preparatory Charter School, which is located within the project area, and the block north of that in the R32 district here is developed with an approximately 46,000-square-foot educational campus that consists of numerous middle and high schools, including the Academy of Medical Technology, the Queens High School for Information, Research, and Technology, and more. Bayswater Park is located one block west of the project area and includes amenities such as skate parks, sports fields, a playground, and more. And the northern portion of the project area, which includes the Charter School, is partially located in the 1% and 0.2% annual floodplain, but the development site is not. This tax map here shows the southern portion of the project area, which is outlined in the dotted block line, and includes block 15785, lots 55, 4, and parts of 54 and 7. Lots 55 and 4 comprise the development site, which are owned by the applicant. And here we have the northern portion of the project area, which includes block 15, I'm sorry, 15737, lots 1 and 10, which is developed with the Charter School that I just mentioned. And here we have a closer view of the project area in context with its immediate surroundings, with rentages on Hartman Lane to the west, Far Rockaway Boulevard to the south, and Beach Channel Drive to the north. The development site is outlined in red and is comprised of a vacant three-story residence and a vacant lot. The project area also includes parts of a lot adjacent to the development site, which are developed with two-story residential buildings, one of which is non-compliant and overbuilt, which is Lot 7. Also in the project area is a two-story Charter School, which is just north of the development site, which is also non-compliant. And as for build context, the residences that are immediately surrounding the project area are mostly two-to-three-story residences, and there are six-story multifamily buildings half-block west of the project area. And the large educational campus mentioned earlier is also partially in view here, just north of the project area. Here we have a view of the portion of the development site that includes the vacant lot facing southeast from Hartman Lane at Beach Channel Drive. And also in view are the two-two-family homes that are adjacent to the site. Here we have a view of the development site that includes the vacant three-story residence facing north at the southern portion of the development site. And here we have a view of the project area facing east with the school in view. The applicant proposes a five-story residential building at a height of 50 feet. It would total approximately 32,500 square feet at 2.16 FAR. There would be 40 new dwelling units, of which 10 would be permanently income-restricted units, and 20 parking spaces would be located in the cellar to be accessed. units, and twenty parking spaces would be located in the cellar to be accessed by a curb cut on Far Rockaway Boulevard. This slide shows a site plan for the proposed development. Access to residential entrances along the building's primary frontage on Hartman Lane are indicated with yellow arrows, and the gray arrow indicates the nine-foot curb cut on Far Rockaway Boulevard, which would provide access to cellar parking. And here we have the proposed plan for the cellar, which would include twenty vehicles and it would be attended parking. Here we have a first-floor site plan that shows a typical floor plan with eight units on each floor ranging from studios to two bedrooms. And this elevation shows the proposed building rising to a maximum height of fifty feet at five stories. To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from the existing R four-one district to an R six-B district, indicated by the dotted block line on the image on the right. And the change would also bring existing non-compliant buildings into compliance within the project area. R six-B districts generally produce buildings at a four to five-story scale, and the transition from R four-one to R six-B allows an increase in residential floor area to up to two-point-two when, including MIH units, and an increase from a thirty-five-foot maximum building height to a fifty-foot maximum building height. The applicant also proposes a zoning tax amendment to map options, MIH options one and two across the project area, and the applicant proposes to utilize option one for the proposed development yielding in twenty-five percent of floor area as ten income-restricted units. This applicant, application requires a racial equity report because it would increase the residential floor area by at least fifty thousand square feet, and the AMI for Community District four is approximately fifty-five thousand, which is lower than the AMIs for the borough of Queens and New York City overall. The applicant proposes to provide ten income-restricted units across a range of forty to eighty percent AMI, with estimated monthly rents ranging from a thousand and ten dollars for one-bedroom units to two thousand four hundred and ten dollars for two-bedroom units, at estimated average incomes ranging from thirty-seven thousand four hundred for a one-person household to a hundred and six thousand eight hundred for a four-person household. And in terms of demographic conditions, of the approximately a hundred and twenty-four thousand residents within Community District fourteen, three percent identify as Asian, thirty-six percent of the population identifies as black, twenty-three percent identify as Latinx, and thirty-two percent identify as white. And in terms of percent change in demographics, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, the area saw an increase in Asian and Latinx populations, a very slight decrease, I'm sorry, a very slight increase in black population and a very slight decrease in the white population. And this is a southeast view of a rendering of a proposed development at the intersection of Beach Channel Drive and Hartman Lane. And in conclusion, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from the R four-one district to an R six-B district and to map an MIH area to facilitate the development of a new five-story residential building with forty units, of which ten would be made income-restricted, and to bring non-compliant buildings within the project area into compliance. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Just one for me. So the R six-B, so moving it from R four-one to R six-B and mapping it for MIH, MIH is applicable, applicable because of the jump to R six-B. If it were not to have gone to R six-B, but the next closest designation, would MIH have been applicable here or what? Tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah, it would, it would not have been. So if it was, and R five, R five-D, it would not have been applicable. R six-B would be the.
So this is the lowest zoning designation for which MIH would be applicable?
Okay.
Commissioner DeWitt.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question, if you can just bring up the site plan for a second. I was just wondering, just on my clarification, when you have the elevators there, that's the side yard, correct? So the two-car elevators, is that considered permitted obstruction?
Um.
Side yard? Because I thought, you know, I'm not saying based on my experience, but you know, from what we do, but I've seen that come up as an objection, you know, based upon, you know, you're allowed to have a garage. So what do you consider the car elevators? Because I haven't seen it like that before. Usually they're within the building, so I'm just curious.
Sure, I can actually get back to you on that.
Just a clarification, because they're using it to get down to access the cellar.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Goodrich, go ahead.
So just to clarify, there are forty units and ten of them are affordable?
Yes.
And then out of the ten, my question is, so is the affordable one, the one-bedroom starts at two thousand dollars?
Um, yes, let me pull up the slide on the racial equity report. They're proposing that approximately four units would be within the very low-income bracket between thirty-one to fifty percent AMI, and then on the higher end, being the moderate income bracket from eighty-one percent to twenty percent AMI, approximately three units.
I do think that if we're looking at affordability and when the projects come in, this is a relatively small building in comparison to the larger projects, but when we do have affordability and it's, most of them are starting at a higher income and the actual rent is two thousand dollars, which I don't think is very affordable for a one-bedroom, quite frankly. I think it's something at least to discuss about what affordability looks like.
Agreed.
But I'm just raising it at a point.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bezos.
I think kind of from that, I have one question, whether the average asking rent, we know for the area?
Um, let's get back to you on what typical, you're asking for typical market rate?
Yeah, what's the typical market rent? Um, and then on that kind of estimated rent, that's based on an estimation of thirty percent of the income of whoever qualifies in that forty to eighty band. So it's not that the rent would definitely be at twenty-four hundred, but if, depending on what AMI is, it's estimated at thirty percent, which is what affordability is considered generally. I'm just to clarify on that.
I mean, I'll just, honestly, I've been.
Thank you, Commissioner.
A lot of, by the time taxes are taken out, it's still based on gross, and by the time taxes are taken out, it's a lot. It's a big chunk of income, and a lot of the apartments that are often listed when they're final projects, they are two thousand and up. I, I mean, I've seen some obviously that are lower rent, but there are quite a bit that end up being quite pricey. I think it's helpful to at least discuss and raise it at this point when it comes before the commission.
Okay.
I mean, I'm on the commission, I can't afford two thousand dollar rent. So, you know, I'll just raise that.
I think we can actually, and this is for a good conversation, because I think that the applicant can help us address some of these things, because it was, and also perhaps others on the commission may have more expertise in this. But my understanding is that the higher end of things are for, it's based on household size. So a household of four would be the upper end of, say, the one oh six, the income that we're looking at here, and I believe that also includes the rents. So a two thousand four hundred and ten would probably not be for a one-bedroom unit, it would be for a two or three-bedroom unit for a family of four. And that is then, so that's the rent for that type of unit. And these are just, I'd say, examples of the, of the rents that are in these ranges. And also, a big caveat, these are all just the current ones. By the time this gets built, these rents will be different, they'll be based on the AMIs at that time.
I was looking at the actual racial equity report.
Okay, that may actually just be an error, and we can, we can drill down on that. Thank you, though.
Okay.
We should talk to the applicant about that, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, all right, thank you very much. This item is certified and we're going to move to the next.
Thank you.
All right. So the third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District thirteen, and our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon Commissioners. So this is a private application by Tire Heaven LLC, seeking approval of a zoning map amendment to change the existing C one-three commercial overlay on an R three-two zoning district to C two-three. This will facilitate legalization of a long-standing tire repair shop at two forty-five oh six South Conduit Avenue in the Rosedale Community and Community District thirteen. The project area fronts the south side of South Conduit Avenue, which runs parallel to Sunrise Highway. Both major thoroughfares, combined with a large median and both three-lane streets, the width to the north of Sunrise Highway is approximately a hundred and seventy-seven feet. Like additional commercial activity is focused along the block frontage throughout this corridor here, with low-density residential to the north and south. The project area was only zoned R three-two until two thousand nine, until a C one-three was established. On the north side of Sunrise Highway is the elevated Rosedale Long Island Railroad Station. And just above that in blue is a satellite precinct for the Hundred and Fifth NYPD precinct and further, home of the newly-established Hundred Sixteenth Precinct Station House, which is currently under construction and was subject to a CPC rezoning in two thousand eighteen, which established the C one-three overlay. The aerial above is rotated, so we're now looking south, so we can view the existing buildings a little closer. To the left or east at lot twenty-three is a gas station that was built prior to nineteen sixty-one, which would only be allowed in C two districts, where the user would still need to seek a BSA special permit. It's currently operating pursuant to BSA variance. Then lots twenty-eight and fourteen make up the development site. They are considered two separate zoning lots, because they don't share enough common lot line to be merged as one zoning lot, but they are in common ownership by the applicant. Combined, the two lots serve as a tire showroom and tire installation facility, which are not allowed in C one districts. The tire shop opened in two thousand eight illegally and has been receiving violations, including from FDNY to correct the non-conformance. Lot twenty-eight is a through lot, which includes a two-story building with second-floor dwelling unit that fronts South Conduit and extends to two hundred and forty-sixth Street. And the ground floor is the applicant's tire repair shop that also extends to lot fourteen. Lot fourteen includes a two-story building, converted detached residential building with a second-floor dwelling unit, and the tire business continuing onto the ground floor from the adjacent lot twenty-eight. Lot twenty-eight is primarily where the repairs are done. Lot fourteen includes a tire sale showroom and additional repair space. Lot twelve includes a two-story building with ground floor azabrite office and two, and second story has two dwelling units. Lot eight has an azabrite fast food restaurant. Lot six is a one-story azabrite commercial building with a deli and cell phone store. Here's some photos of existing conditions. Photo one on the left is a southwest view of the development site, the lot with the converted residential building that includes the ground floor tire showroom and second-floor residential. Photo two is a southwest view, where you can see the second structure, the continuation of the repair facility and second-story residential. That's a building with the red brick on the front of the building. Photo three on the left, southwest view of the gas station, and then on the right is a northwest view of the rear portion of lot fourteen, the through lot portion of the development site that fronts two hundred and forty-sixth Street. This is the entrance to the second-story dwelling unit. There's a legacy storefront that has been closed off since the tire facility entrance is focused on South Conduit Avenue, and then there's a curb cut and white gate entrance to the right. And then photo five on the left is showing a fast food restaurant and one-story retail building, and photo six showing two-story mixed-use building with ground floor office. Again, all the uses here are conforming other than the tire shop the applicant cited. The applicant is not seeking to alter the property within the proposed rezoning, but to legalize, legalize the use, which is only allowed in C two districts. FDNY has issued violations because they failed to provide, the applicant's failed to provide a C of O or letter of no objection from DOB to operate the tire shop. The rezoning would correct this objection. To facilitate the proposed legalization and allow the auto station, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to establish a C one-three to C two-three, essentially just changing the one to two. And this provides additional marginal, additional uses, including one, the tire repair shop and some other uses that otherwise wouldn't be. This includes, runs a gamut from plumbing supply, furniture supplies, slightly larger health fitness establishments, but it's on the margins, and then other auto-oriented uses. This is a highly auto-oriented area along Sunrise Highway. Again, this tire shop has been operating since two thousand eight, albeit illegally, but has been sort of servicing this auto-oriented neighborhood. In conclusion, the land use rationale is to reinforce the existing commercial character of the project area and expand the permitted uses, providing stable zoning predictability to the subject properties and bring the development site and non-conforming use into conformance. That concludes the presentation, thank you.
Commissioner Gold.
So just so I'm clear, as of right, they can have a tire repair, what can they have there?
So it's a C one-three district, tire repair is not, it's a, I believe, a use group seven use. You could have eating and drinking establishments, offices, other type of local retail.
And so the general thinking or the thinking behind this is it's relatively close or in an auto-related area, they sort of decided on their own that they would operate a tire facility there, knowing that it was not legal and we're going to help them?
Yeah, it's certainly a self-created hardship, and I don't know how much information they knew at the time. You know, their understanding, they just understand that this specific use group and impact was categorized other than other type of uses. You know, the agency believes that a lot of these type of auto-oriented, low-impact uses may be appropriate, and certainly where there's auto-focused areas.
Got it. And so, and so taking that a step further, I guess our analysis is, yes, it's a self-created hardship, but they, or the department's analysis, I should say, is, but it's an area where it's sort of, you know, on the margin, close enough, and it's not really affecting things, and so we should just try and clean it up, if you will.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner DeWitt.
Thanks for the presentation. Will they be filing for a new C of O then, after this process is done?
Yeah, the intent is to have a clean C of O.
Right, because I saw that through the DOB business system, I saw they went for a letter of no objection, but as you were stating, the use group seven is not permitted, so I'm just curious to make sure that.
Yeah, and they haven't paying these fines to stay in good standing. They haven't even sort of had, made an sort of an understanding where they could waive them in the intent of fixing this. They've been paying them for quite some time.
Yeah, once you're on FDNY's radar, they're going to keep coming, so, okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Surratt.
I realize this is, you know, the beginning of the process, so it'll be interesting, obviously in a situation like this, to see what the community has to say. I'm assuming that the applicant has some level of confidence that they've been good enough neighbors where they may have the support from the community that they would hope to have in this process, but aside from that, that time will tell, that piece of it. But do we know what generated, at this point, do we know what generated the agency's visits to the business? Were they complaint-driven? Were they just, the agency stumbled on this activity?
I don't know that answer. I know in past times when FDNY has issued violations, it's maybe there's some type of permit because you have some type of hazmat on-site.
Sure.
We had other, other land use applications where that triggered it. I don't know what initiated this.
Sure.
It may be that.
Well, it's interesting, because it's fire too. Fire is really specific. This is a typical response, like I could, you know, if the community person was saying that this shouldn't be happening here, it would be more likely the buildings would come out than fire. So there might be something else to that. Again, it was just a question based on the fact that they were getting violations and I didn't know what was driving, was driving that. But I guess we'll, we'll learn more as the process continues, so.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I had a follow-up question to that, because it's, it sounds like a really interesting opportunity for us as a CPC to provide some guidelines during the pre-certification process on, for example, how to anticipate this. What I'm thinking is, is it an opportunity, because this is an uncompliant business, is there an opportunity to encourage, advise, support the applicant to think about ways in which the public benefit can be sort of like balanced here? And so I'm thinking. And so I'm thinking, this is an auto-related shop. Can there be electric chargers, things that could be introduced sooner rather than later to, to understand, okay, so we're sort of normalizing an uncompliant use, what are the public benefits of it?
Mm-hmm. You know, I think their point of view is that, yes, that they were, they didn't anything this, and it's a self-created hardship, but there's also some consensus that this is a hardship created by the city, not the applicant, and that it's a pretty well-operated business, albeit nonconforming to use. So, you know, this is an area where we see obsolete zoning, not catch, sort of hindering small businesses, and we view as a low-impact auto use.
I mean, not to be answered right now, but it sounds to me like a cool opportunity to think about what could be our role in, in this type of discussions before they actually start.
Then I think, I think it's an interesting point that we should always explore with applicants, what potential opportunities there could be to, to be good, even better neighbors and do things that are consistent with broader public policies. I also think that we have to be careful that we're not, we can't prescribe all of the things in these, in these applications, and it's a private, it's a private interest that has been serving for how long, Scott? How long have they been there?
At least since two thousand eight.
So, so they've been there for fourteen years, operating, you know, without incident except for their, you know, they're getting periodic penalties, and inevitably a small business that probably does not have too much capacity to do too many of the things that we might want them to. So I think you're right, fundamentally, we should always explore those possibilities. I also think it's, it's tough for us to do all of the things, and in this case, you know, well, we'll see, this one's, this one's underway, so we'll see it, and we'll see it in a couple of months, but it's, I think it's a good point. Go ahead, Commissioners.
Good, thank you. Just two quick thoughts, and this sort of is a little bit of a spin-off from Commissioner Gold's question. In addition to permitting this particular use, what other uses would be permissible in this location as of right in the event this application is successful, that are not currently introduced in this neighborhood, or in this location, I should say?
Sure, so the big difference between C one, C two, I believe are sort of service-oriented type of uses, so this repair facility is one. You know, there, you know, I think of the appendix of uses, it includes, boy, plumbing supply services, in certain circumstances, not this place, but hotels when they're in C twos, within a certain distance of a highway, that's not in this case.
Special permit, a special permit, also.
And then there's still a special permit.
This week.
And again, this is not near a highway. So there's, boy, I can't think about the use of medical...
Bike repair is one. Also, the, the gas station that is currently there, I will, just based on my own experience with this, these uses, they have a pre-nineteen sixty-one's variance, is my understanding, and they have to go back to the board very frequently to get updated that variance. And with this rezoning, since they're included, they will then be able to avail themselves of a special permit at the board, which then would, would allow them to be there without constant renewals.
Understood.
So there's, there's, you know, some benefits for other uses that are pre-existing, longtime uses and legal uses that would, you know, flow from, from this change of the zoning.
Understood. So, so that, and you actually touched on the second question, which was, although now the, the gas station use is functioning under a variance with BSA, which is regularly or whatever renewed.
Yeah, it's ten years.
This zoning change would permit them to then apply for the special permit, which would then give them a more permanency and avoid this regular renewal. The function that we're trying to address right now is, had they sought a zoning, did they seek any BSA relief?
No.
On what we're doing now, and if so, given the other piece of this story, why not?
So I, I think generally the BSA doesn't, will, will not look positively on a self-created hardship.
Yeah.
So, you know, perhaps before operating, they could seek a, a variance before operating, but because of self-created hardship, my understanding is BSA doesn't generally support those applications.
This would be a tough variance, I would say.
Yeah, I just wondered if they had at any point in the process, although...
I don't know the history of the site, though, so...
Although a lot of the variances that people seek from BSA are somewhat self-created, you know, they buy a piece of property, they say it doesn't work, and then they seek another use. Again, that's not our, I just wondered if that had been pursued. I realize it doesn't give them the long-term certainty, but it also doesn't create, and as a right scenario, where other uses at some point, which is why I asked the first part of the question, could be introduced at this location if they were in any way not the kinds of uses people would want to have in their neighborhood, but, okay. So thanks, thank you, Scott, thank you.
So the answer to that is other repair and service-type uses is what would be allowed under C two.
Sure.
So plumbing supply, bike repairs, tire repair, that sort of thing is allowed under C two, not allowed under C one, the one that's currently under.
Not, not too many noxious uses coming out of the...
Right, right. The, the previous, we'll talk later about a modification, was a hundred sixty-fourth Street, a medical laboratory, another use that's on the list.
Medical laboratory.
Medical lab.
Gyms.
Gyms, larger gyms. You have a gym in a C one district, but over ten thousand square feet in a C two district.
Special permit for that, too?
No, not anymore. Get rid of that, I'll fear.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Serrano, did you have another one?
I just wanted to highlight that, even, I mean, I, I really appreciate the, the discussion, the opportunity to talk about this, because this is not necessarily to sort of reorient the, the specific land use group that we're talking about, but to anticipate that if the CLCPA regulations actually get implemented, gasoline stations are going to be, are going to disappear sooner rather than later. And so how do we prepare this business to be as competitive as possible to the transition that is coming? That's sort of what I'm, what I'm getting to, or where I see the full potential here.
I think, listen, I, I think that's a good point, and we are, as part of the other zoning tax amendment, we're taking a look at, we're looking at ways to incentivize electric vehicle charging throughout the entire city. I would expect, although I do not know, that tires will still be needed in the future vehicles, so unless there's technology that's moved beyond my understanding, but yes, your point is a good one. We need to find ways to think about future uses and anticipate where we're heading, for sure. Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Great, thanks, Scott. This item is certified, and we're going to move on to our pre-hearing reviews.
That's right. The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in Brooklyn Community District Three. Our presenter is Jesse Hirakawa. Jesse?
Thank you, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This application was certified back in July eleventh of two thousand twenty-two. I'm here for a pre-hearing presentation on four four six four four eight Park Avenue, and the applicant will be presenting in two days, on the ninth, for the public hearing. This is an application for a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment to facilitate a new six-story multifamily residential building with approximately eleven thousand three hundred square feet with eleven dwelling units, three of which will be income-restricted units. The project area is in the northwest area of the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Three, between Williamsburg and Fort Greene neighborhoods at four four six four four eight Park Avenue. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from an M one-one district to an M one-four slash R six A district, also an MX four district, and a zoning tax amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The area is surrounded, the area surrounding the project area is characterized by a variety of uses from industrial manufacturing, as you could see in the shades of purple, commercial in the shades of red, residential in the shades of yellow and orange, and lastly, community facility and cultural institutions are there in blue. The project area is mapped within the M one-one light manufacturing district, which allows for commercial and a variety of light manufacturing uses, such as repair shops, wholesale services and storage facilities, all of up to an FAR of one, where the building heights are controlled by a sky-exposure plane. Directly to the east of the project, you're right, is the border of an M one-two slash R six A district, also the MX four district, which is the special mixed-use district, which was actually mapped as part of the two thousand one Flushing-Berford rezoning, which was a department-sponsored rezoning that permitted new residential uses in order to accommodate the growing need for housing, while also preserving industrial and commercial uses within the mixed-use district. The area surrounding has several building typologies, including two to three stories of industrial warehouses and lots. There are vacant lots and parking lots. There are several educational and cultural institutions, also four-to-six-story multifamily buildings with some commercial ground-floor uses that run along Park Avenue. The project area is located within a transit zone. There are five stops to the G train, all located within one mile of this project area. There are several buses that run within this, within the surrounding area. And lastly, three blocks to the west, you're left on the image, is the BQE, Brooklyn Queens Looking at our site, the applicant, the two applicant-owned lots, the development site is lots thirty-seven and thirty-eight in the middle there, comprising of three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and forty feet of this, and forty feet of street frontage along Park Avenue, and they both are currently vacant. Lot thirty-five, which you see on your right, is improved with a legal nonconforming three-story multifamily residential building. On your left, at Lot seven-five-oh-one, is improved with a six-story multifamily residential building with approximately thirteen thousand nine hundred square feet, which was built back in two thousand six, pursuant to a BSA variance. Going across the street, across Franklin Avenue to the east, we're still on Park Avenue and looking south at Lot twenty-nine, which is improved with two buildings, including a legal nonconforming four-story mixed-use residential and commercial building, where there are three dwelling units with a ground-floor coffee shop and a one-story fish market. Moving north along Franklin Avenue to the east, we're looking at Block eighteen ninety-nine, which is Lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty, are all improved with legal nonconforming three-story two-family residential buildings, all which were built before nineteen-ten. The proposed development facilitated by the actions will be a new six-story plus-seller multifamily residential building with approximately eleven thousand three hundred square feet with eleven dwelling units. The proposed development will rise to a total height of eighty feet with a base height of sixty-five feet with a setback after the fifth floor. As a reminder, the proposed actions consist of a zoning map amendment to rezon the project area from an M one-one district to an M one-four R six A MX four district. Looking a bit closer, the applicant is proposing to extend these existing MX district boundaries to the west, while switching the manufacturing district from an M one-two to an M one-four, that's the difference, is to reduce those parking requirements. The proposed extension of the mixed-use district will permit manufacturing, residential, and commercial uses in this mixed-use district with a variety of different FARs. M one-four slash R six A is a mixed-use district that permits a wide variety of uses, with residential up to a maximum of three-point-six FAR with inclusionary housing, commercial and industrial uses with a maximum of two FAR, and community facility uses with a maximum of up to three FAR. Buildings are required to have a base height, base height between forty and seventy-five feet, followed by a required setback, and then with a maximum building height of eighty-five feet. Off-street parking is required for fifty percent of these dwelling units, while income-restricted units are exempt. Lastly, the last action proposed is a zoning tax amendment to amend Appendix F to designate the project area as an MIH area with option one, where twenty-five percent of the units must be set aside for income-restricted housing at an average of sixty percent AMI, and option two, where thirty percent of those units must be at eighty percent AMI. Let's farm in notes that the MIH requirement for an individual project is triggered when a development is proposed at twelve thousand five hundred square feet of residential floor area, or ten or more units. As a reminder, the applicant is proposing eleven thousand three hundred square feet, approximately, and eleven units, and has indicated that they intend to build MIH to better maximize the available three-point-six FAR, and they plan to speak further to that at the public hearing. On October third, in two thousand twenty-two, the Brooklyn Community Board Three voted twenty-three in favor, nine in opposition, and one abstained, to approve with conditions. There was one condition that they choose, that we choose option one for MIH. As a reminder, that's twenty-five percent of the housing set aside at sixty percent On October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the Brooklyn Borough President's Office had a public hearing, and on November second, they submitted a recommendation to approve with conditions, in that prior to consideration by City Council, the applicant would commit to the following. Provide MIH units within the proposed development with a minimum of ten apartments reflected in the applicant's filed building plans. Retain a qualified administering agent for the four four six four four eight Park Avenue MIH lottery. Also incorporate resiliency and sustainability measures, such as blue-green roofs, passive house design, and/or onsite energy generation. Coordinate with DEP, DPR, and DOT to install rain gardens on Park Avenue as part of the builder's pavement plan, but also in consultation with Community Board Three and local council members. Lastly, to retain Brooklyn-based contractors, suppliers, and provide employment opportunities to area residents. And the last thing they noted before the resolve, that DCP initiate an area-wide study of land use and zoning patterns in this section of Bedford-Stuyvesant with input from CB Three and local officials, and in response to the Borough President's request that DCP initiate a study to land use and zoning patterns. I think we would definitely like to discuss further with Community Board Three and those elected officials to better understand what the goals and priorities are of the, of the overall area. I would lastly note on, on the July review session, there were two open questions. One from Commissioner Bernie at the time pertaining to site plans, and the site plans and illustrative drawings are in the briefing package. The last one was to Commissioner Rappaport about sustainability measures and rooftop access, well-mentioned to the applicant, and they plan to speak to that on Wednesday's public hearing. Thank you, Commissioners, and that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to take questions from the Commission. I'm going to start with the Vice Chairman. Let me just do two quick follow-ups here to the presentation. One of them is the, the nonconformity in the, in the area. So with this new MX four over the, the area described, would that bring all of the buildings that are currently there into, into conformity?
In terms of conformity, yes, it would bring all of the uses back into conformity, conforming.
Okay, and on the threshold for MIH, so this is right at the cusp.
Yes.
So you don't need to do MIH if you're ten or under, or under twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And this one is under twelve thousand five hundred, but it is eleven units.
Yes.
So it's, it's right on the, right on the line.
Yes.
So any efforts to take it down would impede the ability to get any affordable units out of this site. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Not that I'm anticipating that, but I just, you know, we've seen it happen before, so I just noted here. Okay, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chair. And this is an observation. I mean, if you look at the space where that terrace is, is, is between the...
The funding.
...building, right, at seventy-five, Lot seventy-five-oh-one, and the proposed building, as I recall, there were terraces along the wall of Lot seventy-five-oh-one, and with the applicant building up to the lot line, I was looking for the dimension on the drawings, but that space doesn't look to be any more than, it doesn't look like it's ten feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got terraces that are going to really be extending over an alley. I don't know that that's the applicant's problem, per se, but it's, it creates a, I think, a rather odd situation for the inhabitants of, of this building in Lot seventy-five-oh-one.
Yeah, and I think that you're talking about seventy-five-oh-one, the BSA variance building that was approved back in two thousand six, yeah. I believe there is, I don't know what the exact distance is, right, from the building to the lot line, but...
Ten feet. I mean, you're going to have these, these terraces literally over an alley, right?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
Well, yeah, they look like terraces on...
Yeah, they do look like terraces. Yeah, they do look like terraces.
They say they're terraces, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, buildings of this vintage don't have fire escapes in the way that we
Yeah, this was built in, what, oh-six?
Yeah.
So it's
Well, we can pose that question on, on Wednesday.
Yeah, they have what they can take to that.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. This is a really, I appreciate the response regarding a potential area-wide study to understand how to think about rezonings that are normalizing nonconforming uses, that are otherwise, would otherwise not be allowed here, as an opportunity to increase affordable housing. But I was wondering if, one, you can encourage the applicant to discuss how is the proposed affordable housing responding to specific racial, how is it responding to the racial breakdown of the median household income specifically for Hispanics and black, non-Hispanics, which again seems, is considerably lower than just the sort of the general MHI. One, but, but two, I was wondering if, if in addition to, to the core of the, of the recommendation, I was wondering if you can discuss a little bit, what is the position of the department in terms of the nonconforming uses here? This is an interesting area because it's a little bit outside of the significant maritime and industrial area, a little bit outside of the IBC. It's, it's still sort of industrial land, but it's surrounded by a bunch of different land use intentions, let's say. How many other nonconforming uses are there in the surrounding area? Like, do we have that data? I, I'm just trying to understand, how can we think about this from a comprehensive planning point of view to, to understand the impact of, of legalizing these nonconforming uses, creating, I think, just a few affordable housing units, potentially risking losing more affordable housing units if, if this could generalize to a neighborhood-wide rezoning away from, from industrial jobs, for example? So I'm, I'm just wondering if, how, how, how can we think about this, sort of like from a comprehensive way? What, what is the, the, the position of the department in this regard?
I know for, in terms of the amount of nonconforming uses in this area, right, a lot of, a lot of these buildings were built before we placed the zoning right back in nineteen sixty-one, creating a lot of the nonconforming legal. But in terms of doing kind of overall comprehensive look at those numbers, I think that's, you know, something that, I don't, I don't have those exact numbers. Maybe Alex might, but I think, yeah.
No, I was, I was going to say, we, we don't have exact numbers yet on the breakdown of the MX. As Jesse mentioned, a lot of this was built out as mixed, mixed-use neighborhood, pre-zoning. And then, as discussed, there's been a lot of BSA applications allowing variances. A lot of these smaller sites were actually historically residential, you know, the very small lot, lot, lot sizes. And that was one of the things that BSA was looking at, was reallowing residential on some of those lots that would be more difficult for industrial uses. So we've seen a transition over the time. We've spoken with Community Board Three on this in the past. They've also asked us to take a look at this area. I think it's something we're, we're definitely open to in getting a handle of the existing conditions. And you're right, it has to balance operating existing industrial uses, where freight truck routes are getting to the BQE and the, and the Navy Yard. So this is definitely something that, it's a complex area, but it's something that we, we are definitely interested in taking a look at.
Thank you. I commend you for that because I, I think that this is a real opportunity for, for the department to show or demonstrate how to think about this, this as a complex land use problem that is going to come up and come up. One last point, which is, i- if you don't mind highlighting or, or encouraging, whether you know at this point, or if not, then encouraging the applicant to discuss the response to having at least ten affordable housing units, again, to maximize like the potential for affordable housing, or maximizing the public benefit of rezoning away from industrial manufacturing here. One, but also, two, there, there seems to be, and I support, I agree with the Borough President's recommendation to think about a, having some sort of a nonprofit to generate the capacity and inform the community in terms to, to be able to apply for the affordable housing in, in the future. But I'm wondering if you can confirm, any affordable housing produced here would have to go through the city's lottery, right? Nothing really would guarantee that the people would actually, from, from here, get those affordable housing units, or am I wrong?
No, I believe you're right, yeah. I think it's in terms, there's no way for us to guarantee, like you said, but, um, yeah, as spoken at the Borough President's hearing, and I think we'll ask on Wednesday, it's definitely, how do they ensure that MIH? But I think, I believe that if they are going to go through that program, they do have to go through with the HPD and Housing Lottery.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It, it's just a very interesting opportunity to think about how can the affordable housing proposed is really responding to the median household income by race, because we can't promote affordable housing for specific racial groups, but we need to guarantee that the people who live there that need the affordable housing actually can apply to it in terms of their income.
Agreed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Just a follow-up on Commissioner Soria's question. Is there still a preference for local residents in the lottery?
There is.
There is?
Yeah, fifty percent. Community Board.
Right, so it's been challenged, right? That's why I was wondering if it's still in place, so.
Yeah, so fifty percent.
So that would ensure that a certain percentage would go to the local community or to the, and the demographics that are in that community.
I think what's, what's challenging with the community board preference in a gentrified neighborhood like this is what, it, it is people who live in the neighborhood, but there's no way to guarantee it's necessarily people at highest risk of displacement or any of that, but yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. We're going to see this one on Wednesday with the applicant, so we will kick it over to Wednesday. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Ryan, what's next?
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in the Bronx, Community District Ten, and our presenter is Philip Montgomery.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Returning for pre-hearing review is an application by Throggs Neck Associates LLC seeking an amendment to the city map. The proposed amendment involves the elimination, discontinuance, and closing of a portion of Meyer Street between East Tremont Avenue and Edison Avenue in the Bronx Community District Ten. The proposed amendment, in conjunction with previously approved land use applications, would facilitate the development of new mixed-use commercial and residential buildings. The proposed city map amendment is requested in connection with the Brookner Sites Rezoning Project, which includes a series of land use actions, including zoning map and zoning text amendments, which were approved by the City Planning Commission on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and by the City Council on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Together, the land use actions would facilitate the development of four new mixed-use commercial and residential buildings. Project area is located in the scalable neighborhood of the Bronx within Community District Ten. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of predominantly residential use with commercial uses concentrated along portions of Brookner Boulevard, excuse me, Boulevard and East Tremont Avenue. The project area is presently zoned R-four-A with a C-one-two overlay. Meyer Street between East Tremont Avenue and Edison Avenue is a mapped but unbuilt street and has never been used for vehicular through traffic. It is mapped to an irregular width and is both partially city and privately owned. The subject portion of Meyer Street proposed to be demapped is privately owned, mapped to a width of fifty feet, and extends approximately one hundred and ten feet westward from Edison Avenue and is approximately fifty-five hundred square feet in area. This is an aerial view showing the limits of Meyer Street that are under city jurisdiction and will remain. Those are the areas outlined in blue, and the area in red is under applicant ownership, and that's the, the portion that is proposed to be demapped. There's another view of the area proposed to be demapped, looking eastwards towards Edison Avenue. Community Board Ten voted twenty-four in favor and zero opposed to disapprove the application. The Borough President approved the application with conditions. The conditions are the same as noted in the conditional approval of the related actions, and the highlights are having union jobs, unit size, and existing infrastructure needs should be reevaluated, and the opportunity to create homeownership opportunities. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to ask the, the question that I do know the answer to, but I'm sure that it's on other people's minds, which is, didn't we just do this? Why are we talking about a map change after we already approved the various related actions that you described before?
Sure. The, all of the actions were intended to travel together, but city map changes, they have a, a different pre-certification process that at times can slow them down. And in this case, the map change was, was slowed, and the applicant chose to move forward with the other applications and then had the city map come behind. But the, the goal for the project was to have all of this moved together, it's just the map change didn't catch up.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodrich.
I think I'm mistaken, so I just
My, my recollection is that the, that the fifty percent was worked out during the process for, for those. We can, we can update our, for this, although this, this might have been simply you're discussing just the site.
Yes.
So we're actually not, we'd have to go and ask the applicant which site they were doing the additional affordable units, because it may not have been the site. They have, they had three sites, as I recall.
Four, I believe.
Four.
Yeah.
And so they may have been doing, say, for example, a hundred percent affordable building on one of the other sites to sort of get to that fifty percent. We can, actually, that's a good question. Just ask the applicant how that's going to break down. Yeah, we'll, we'll have the applicant break that down at the hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering if, if you can share a little bit, what, why does the community board, why does the community board unanimously recommend denial?
They, I, I, I might have to punt that to the applicant on, on Wednesday.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, you're getting the, the story there. The, the community board was opposed to the rezoning which, which preceded this on, on various grounds, density, and neighborhood character.
Yeah, yeah. It would be great to hear from the applicant a little bit, you know, how is this being worked out? I mean, it's clearly something that was partially accepted, but I'm just wondering. Two, the, the, in the, in the Borough President's statement, there seems to be some concerns about infrastructure needs that need to be prioritized. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I don't really have, have much to add to that. You know, the, the recommendation, I believe, you asked for the mayor's office to convene a, a committee or something to, to investigate this, so I don't really have, you know, any good concrete answers for that. Maybe the applicant might have something that they could add on
Yeah, that would be great if we can hear a little bit more about that. And just lastly, I was wondering, what is the position of the department regarding the applicant planning to develop more parking than required?
I specifically
I, I, yeah, the Bronx Office isn't here to discuss this, but I will cop to knowing a lot about the Throggs Neck community. This is not a transit accessible or highly transit accessible. I would say it's about a bus ride to a subway, and then it's a bit of a sit on the subway to, to get to, say, a job center. But, so I think that having more parking here is, while not, I mean, we think that the parking required is probably fine, but I believe that the market may be pushing them to provide more parking on the site in terms of someone who lives in this neighborhood, there is an expectation that they would be able to have parking for their car.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine, did you? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goodrich, go ahead and see it.
Just one more. I'm just following up on Commissioner needed opposition. Actually, anything I feel like I know what the actual
I'll have to follow up with you on that, that's, that's a good question.
Thank you very much, and I will just, well, we, we will, we'll take this up of the, the de-mapping portion of this application of a prior action that we, that we approved here at the Commission and has already been approved at the Council. So we'll, we'll, we can ask our follow-up questions to the applicant on Wednesday. We appreciate your, your presentation. And let's go to the, the next item, next and final pre-hearing item for the day. Ryan?
Sir, the sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review. This is for a letter of intent to acquire office space in Manhattan Community District One, and our presenter is Jasmine DePauli.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a notice of intent to acquire office space by the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST, and the Administration for Children's Services, or ACS, pursuant to Section one-nine-five of the New York City Charter. This will facilitate the acquisition of office space at one-ten William Street in Lower Manhattan, Community District One. ACS is responsible for the safety and well-being of New York City children and families by providing child welfare, juvenile justice, primary prevention, and childcare services. The proposed office space acquisition is for the relocation of ACS's headquarters currently at one-fifty William Street. ACS has been at their existing headquarters for over twenty years. However, the offices at one-fifty William Street no longer serve the agency's current and growing needs. The offices at their existing headquarters have been retrofitted in the past, but any future retrofits will require staff to relocate temporarily and cause disruptions, especially for their client-facing services. Additionally, ACS has received new mandates over the years that have increased ACS's capacity, which the current offices do not efficiently accommodate. The relocation will support staff growth and new mandates and needs through improved and expanded spaces, as well as increasing their operational efficiency at one location. The boundaries for the proposed ACS office space at one-ten William Street include William Street to the west, Fulton Street to the north, Gold Street to the east, and John Street to the south. The lot is mapped on the C-six-four district within the special Lower Manhattan district. Generally, the area features large towers mainly used for the commercial office use above and ground floor use, ground floor retail uses, as well as some residential uses as well. The relocation will place ACS a block away from its current headquarters at one-fifty William Street. This neighborhood is a transit-rich area with access to the Fulton Street Station, which includes the AC, JZ, two, three, four, and five subway lines. The Fulton Station is a block away from the proposed office, and the office building itself includes a subway entrance inside the building that connects to the Fulton Station. DCAST has been trying to find a suitable relocation space, and the need is identified in the Citywide Statement of Needs for fiscal years two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four. As part of DCAST's considerations, the site met the criteria largely in part due to the accessibility to the public transit, as well as its close proximity to the original headquarters. The proposed office is on the corner of William and John Street, so here's a view on the corner of William and, William Street and John Street, looking north on William Street. One-ten William Street is on the right. William Street will be the main entrance for the ACS staff, clients, and the general public, and I'll have more details on that in a slide later on. So here's a view again on the corner of William Street and John Street, looking east on John Street. One-ten William Street is now on the left. There is a subway entrance on this side of the building, as well as a secondary exit for ACS staff. ACS seeks to acquire approximately six hundred and forty thousand square feet of office space throughout twenty-five floors at one-ten William Street. floors at 110 William Street. They will occupy a majority of the building, as you can see in the diagram to the right. The rest of the floors will be occupied by existing office tenants. The proposed relocation would accommodate for approximately 2,500 employees over eighteen divisions. Several ACS divisions provide direct services to the public, including but not limited to the Division of Child Protection, which provides supervisory family visits while the child is under ACS care, and also the Division of Child and Family Well-being, which provides customer service to families and providers related to the subsidized childcare application process. ACS estimates that it will serve approximately a hundred clients per day at the new location. Other ACS divisions that would be located in the new office space include the divisions that are administrative in nature, such as the Office of General Counsel, Division of Financial Services, and the Office of Information Technology. On the screen is an image of the ground floor of 110 William Street. Outlined in yellow is the office building lobby that ACS staff will enter through to access elevators that connect to the staff office spaces. There will be a dedicated entrance for ACS clients and the public near the corner of William Street and John Street, outlined in the blue. This dedicated entrance will provide direct access to a new client-focused center on the second floor. So, here's a floor plan of the test fit for the second-floor Client Focus Center. The Client Focus Center floor plan is modeled after a recent build-out that ACS created when it acquired office space in the Brooklyn MetroTech location, approved by the CPC in 2019. The proposed center includes amenities such as the reception area, interview rooms, conference rooms, family visiting areas, a children's corner and nursery, and a public lactation room. Some services that will be offered at the new location include counseling, family meetings, and supervised visits, parenting skills training, and child abuse prevention programs. The normal hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., but a few programs will operate 24/7. Here is a floor plan of the test fit for the third floor with typical office spaces. Staff offices will be separate from the client-facing spaces. In summary, the applicant is requesting a PX action notice of intent to inquire office space pursuant to Section 195 of the New York City Charter to facilitate the relocation of ACS's headquarters currently at 150 William Street. There is a public hearing this Wednesday where ACS and DCAST will be available for further questions. In addition, Community Board One will hold a land use committee meeting today, November 7th, to discuss the project. Some initial issues that were brought to our attention regarding this project was about the parking and the office buildings' relationship to the residential buildings in the neighborhood. So, for the parking, CB One expressed that ACS should minimize or eliminate any non-essential placard use, since the neighborhood shares space with, shares space with a number of city agencies who all compete for parking and cause many instances of double-parked vehicles or illegal parking on the narrow streets of Lower Manhattan. Additionally, there are concerns over the internal construction needed to renovate and build out the floors at 110 William Street to prepare for ACS's relocation. ACS and DCAST has met with CB One to discuss these concerns and can speak more to their responses this Wednesday. That's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jasmine. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Jasmine. I, I just have really one overarching question that I've asked over and over again, and I don't seem to ever be provided with a response, and that is, I'm not understanding, the city knows that it's going to be moving its offices somewhere, why isn't the city trying to advance purchasing land so that it could pay a mortgage and host its agencies in a building where it's not paying a mortgage and not rent? EDC just left this building less than two years ago, maybe two years ago, at Tops, and went over to the World Trade Center, and now we have Children's Services coming in. So, I, I just, I just think it's not a wise choice to keep paying rent. In 1992, when I was a fellow, when I was assigned to the City of Phoenix, that's the first thing we did. We evaluated all of the city's spaces, and we built a new city hall, and we eliminated all the rents that the city was paying, saving the city $6.2 million a year. So, I'd like to better understand why the city doesn't consider this, and maybe there could be some sort of position or, or some descriptor of why the city isn't thinking about this.
No, thank you for your comment. DCAST will have a representative working from their leasing team coming this Wednesday, so I'll make sure to have them prepare a comment for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Doak?
Thank you. In line with Commissioner Marine's comments, will the city have an option to purchase the building in the event, or first right, right of first refusal, in the event the landlord wants to sell the building? Would that be part of the lease?
I don't have that information, but there will be somebody from the leasing team, and they should have those details. But I'll make sure to give them that information as well.
This action wouldn't permit them to do so, though. So, that would be a dispo, or an acquisition action, if, if we would have to have a different U-Lip.
I think the language could be written in a lease where, subject to approval from a...
Yeah, they would have to come back through U-Lip.
Then they would have the right of first refusal.
Right. The question was, I, I don't think it was a question about, are the, the city action, it was a question of the lease, does it?
Sure, sure.
And, okay, well, we'll, we'll pose that question on Wednesday.
Yes, because we'll have the leasing team on Wednesday.
You know, because I, I remember being on the EDC board, and we were there for many years, and SBS was there, so it seems like the city kind of likes that building, and we've been a tenant for many years. And in line with Commissioner Marine's comments, had we purchased it back in the day, we'd own it today and have an asset that belongs to the people of New York, so...
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorel?
So, and I, this is really, I suppose, a question that's relevant to ask DCAST when, when, at the point in time during the hearing, but I'm just wondering, with, with this consolidation, and, and certainly, I don't oppose consolidation that seems to be rational for an agency to be able to function in a different way, but I'm just wondering whether this action will enable all the different parts of ACS to be in one place, or will there be any additional functions or divisions not included in the consolidation that the city would still be leasing space in other places? The other thing is that when, and I'm not sure of the timing of when the consolidation would actually occur, but since there are outstanding leases in the buildings where they currently exist, are there penalties associated, or is there a future use of the space that the city is looking to move other agencies into? It would just be helpful to understand sort of the chess game of, if there is one, of what's going to happen with the existing space the ACS operations maybe are in now, particularly if they're not in city-owned spaces, and what implications that, that may have.
Yeah, just to give you some preliminary information.
Sure.
ACS does have satellite offices in the other, in the outer boroughs that they will keep, so those won't be consolidated.
Great.
Um, and in addition, I think to another question, the question you were posing about what's going to happen to the current building, they currently, the landlord themselves don't currently have plans. I'm sure the leasing representative from DCAST can give you more information, though.
Appreciate that. And was there any part of the operation, I know you gave us times of operation, but is there any seven-day-a-week responsibilities or operations where on a weekend, people have the ability to access the building?
Yeah, they do have emergency services, based on the nature of their programs. They can talk more about the operations for that.
Sure.
I'll remember to give...
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And just so, I'm getting, I have back-of-house chat here tells me that this is, wants to make sure that this is, not characterized as a consolidation, this is just a relocation of the entire headquarters, and from my understanding is that, that ACS has had additional responsibilities added, and therefore, staff that goes with that, and they've outgrown that headquarters and, and are now relocating it to a larger...
Got it. Okay, that's, thank you.
Commissioner Doak?
Just a follow-up question, thank you. This headquarters also serves as the public, as clients that come in.
Yes.
Is this the only Manhattan location for the agency, serving the clients?
No, they, they have other locations, but I will have them give you more information on Wednesday on their other...
My only thought is, now that, you know, they're moving, the proximity, although it's a different borough to MetroTech, is pretty close by, by a train ride, so maybe this might be an opportunity to move somewhere that can serve their clients even better, unless you're merging it with the headquarters, which I'd imagine they'd want to be closer to City Hall and city agencies, so...
I can have them speak more to that on Wednesday.
Thank you.
I don't believe that they had plans to merge MetroTech with this location, since they actually recently acquired MetroTech in 2019.
My comment wasn't to merge MetroTech.
Oh, okay.
My comment was to maybe be in somewhere in Manhattan, if this is, you know, I'd like to know what, what offices they have in proximity to this office to serve the public, and maybe to spread it out in a better fashion, which can actually benefit the public, so...
Okay. I'll, I'll have them answer that on Wednesday.
Thank you. This move being the opportunity to take a look at that is what I...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other question, comments, questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jasmine. Okay, so this one will go off to a public hearing on Wednesday. Ryan, let's talk about our council mod.
Yes, the seventh item on our agenda is the City Council modification scope determination in Queens Community District Eight. Scott Solomon is here to discuss.
Great. So, on September 21st, the CPC approved the 7918-164th Street rezoning, change in L-shaped C-13 commercial overlay, front to corner of 164th Street and Union Turnpike to a C-23 commercial overlay. No changes underlying R-5D and R-4 districts that front Union Turnpike and 164th Street were changed. DCP has received a modification recommended by the city council, reducing the size of the rezoning area, which would still change a portion of the C-13 to C-23 in the lots that only front 164th Street, including the applicant's medical laboratory, seeking legalization, but retaining the C-13 that fronts Union Turnpike. Above, we're looking at the zoning map, zoning change map as approved by the commission, which was to change the commercial overlay for the entire project area, again, from C-13 to C-23. Per the CPC report, the commission notes that the proposed R-4, C-23, and R-5D, C-23 zoning districts are appropriate, as they will continue to facilitate future low-density residential development and will reinforce the existing low-rise commercial character on 164th Street and Union Turnpike, and support existing, as well as additional, commercial opportunities. Above, and very subtle, above is an updated zoning change map reflecting the city council's modification to limit the C-23 only on the lots that front 164th Street. Again, very subtle, so I'm going to, this next image is just zooming in onto the sketch map, highlighting the modification. Highlighted in blue is the portion of 100-foot-deep section of the C-13 overlay along Union Turnpike that would remain unchanged. To the south is the area that would be rezoned in the brown color, that would change the C-13 to C-23 along 164th Street, including the applicant's site, again, a non-conforming medical laboratory. Although the rezoning area is reduced, and the legalization would still be facilitated, and there would still be approximately 20,000 square feet of area alongside a wide street. DCP staff have reviewed the proposed modification and determined that is within scope of the application and EAS previously approved by the commission. That completes those slides and have taken any questions.
Thank you. Now that we've had such a long discussion at this very briefing about C-2, do you have any more insights as to what the council was looking to achieve in the C-1 versus C-2 distinction here?
So, the, the city council and your staff communicated that their goal here was to reinforce the existing low-density, local retail and commercial uses here. I would note that during the community board meetings and the borough president hearings, a common concern here was, again, some uses that were addressed earlier that they do not like. One additional use was, brought several times, was billiards. That was a use that came up oftentimes from the community board. It was a use that was communicated several times, so adds onto that list of C-2 uses that you had asked earlier, alongside bicycle repair shops I did not add on to earlier. But I would note, those uses would be allowed on the C-23 that is proposed to remain, that includes the medical laboratory.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, and the department believes that these changes are within scope. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, with that, I am going to seek assent here by a voice vote to send a letter to the council that the modifications are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we will send them said letter. Ryan, what's next?
All right. So, we are moving on to future votes for consideration on Wednesday, October 9th, 2022. Staff have prepared a report for the Block 675 EMS Number 7 relocation. Andy Cantu is here to discuss the department's recommendation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So, on Wednesday, you'll vote on the application for site selection and approval to facilitate the relocation of EMS Station 7 from a temporary trailer underneath the High Line to a new state-of-the-art 18,000-square-foot facility at 613 West 29th Street in West Chelsea and Hudson Yards. The new station will help the FDNY meet their needs and lead to improved service for Manhattan's West Side neighborhoods. When this project first came to DCP as a concept, we also had questions related to the implementation timeline and were anxious about possible delays due to the Gateway Tunnel project. However, we're reassured by FDNY's and DCAST's pledges that they have and will continue to plan for contingencies and redeploy resources as needed to ensure that operational capabilities are not diminished in the short or medium term. So, because of that, staff enthusiastically supports this much-needed proposal.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Sorel.
Thank you for that. I, I'm just wondering if there was any additional response to the vulnerability of the site to coastal flooding?
There was no additional response from, from the applicant.
I'm, I'm just curious, what is the, the department's policy in terms of locating EMS facilities in vulnerable locations? I mean, clearly, the FDNY has a series of strategies that they mentioned, you know, they would deploy, but when do those need to be in place, or at least defined, in the, during the planning process?
So, the WRP process concluded that this would be an appropriate place to locate this facility, and I think staff is satisfied by DCAST and FDNY's assurances that they will locate critical infrastructure above 500-year floodplain pre-board.
Thank you, but I, I mean, maybe for further discussion, but that doesn't solve the problem that the vehicles are going to be in, in an area that is going to inundate, so they may have the sort of like second on above floors safe, but how are the vehicles going to come in and out? I mean, arguably, they will, they'll have to have a plan for it, but I'm just wondering, when does that plan, when is that plan defined in terms of the decision, the planning process base?
During, I think, you know, in the future, during the actual design process of the facility itself, there will be sort of a more robust process for determining what particular interventions I think would be appropriate for this specific site, and I think FDNY mentioned that there would be the possibility of including sort of deployable barriers in the event of inundation, and that's something that I think they have at other sites, or have used at other sites, and this would be an option for the site.
And, and these are also operational ways of addressing these things, and in fact, most of these sites, what, what happens is they, they deploy out from these, and most of the, the time, the vehicles that are housed there are actually on the street waiting for an emergency within their sort of service area, and then, so my, my assumption would be, and I, and I think that, that we could get this confirmed, but that, you know, prior to a storm, that they would deploy prior to the storms, that the vehicles are not going to be in there during, during a known flood event, and, and that they would also deploy other safety measures.
Right. Yeah, it's a little bit different than sort of like a fire station or a police station where the vehicles are sort of always on-site all the time. EMS vehicles are typically sort of located in cells around the neighborhood and then deployed to an emergency... deployed to an emergency site when a 911 call is placed. And I assume that, you know, assuming there is not sort of generalized flooding around the city or the borough, that, you know, FDNY could move and reconfigure these vehicles around to other facilities if necessary, if, you know, in the event that you couldn't access the facility because of flooding. But I understand sort of more long-term implications, like that doesn't necessarily solve for the fact that this could be underwater.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I appreciate the response, and I just wish that we didn't have to assume that we had a plan to understand how they would mitigate that, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Andy. We will be voting on this one on Wednesday. Ryan?
Sure. So also for consideration on Wednesday are 197 Meisner Avenue and 765 Rathbun Avenue. These are certifications pursuant to Staten Island Special Districts. Staff believe the findings have been met and are recommending approval. Moving on to post-hearing follow-ups, on 5802 Northern Boulevard rezoning, we, there was a robust discussion with the applicant on this one. Regarding this land use questions, we feel that those have been addressed. We'd like to hear from the commission on... Any further questions on that? Okay. And then on 9727 57th Avenue, commercial overlay, we also don't have anything, the staff level doesn't have anything specific to add to that conversation, if there's anything we want us to address. All right.
Great. Anything else, Ryan?
That concludes our agenda for today.
Terrific. Well, with that, let me just express my appreciation to you, Ryan, as well as the entire staff at the department, and of course, all the commissioners for their time and attention and patience today, and we will look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday morning. Thanks, everybody.